Let's start. Call this meeting to order. City Council, meeting June twenty seventh, City of Mayflower. Call to order, please.
Jennifer Massey?
Here.
Mark Kiehlman?
Here.
Zach Jeffrey? Jack Paul?
Here.
Kyle Mark?
Here.
Good. Will you all, let's like the pledge of allegiance, allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Okay, we've already covered the roll call. Approval of the minutes, previous meetings. Make a motion to approve the minutes. Got a motion and second? You want to call the roll? Okay, we'll just do this by all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good. Ayes carried. Then we move to the financial statement. April and May two thousand twenty-three. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll second.
Talk in the microphone, please.
I make the motion to accept the financial statements of April and May of two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Mark second. Same thing. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes carry it. Next on the agenda is the resolution two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four. The pay request for diamond construction. This is the, now Raymond, correct me if I'm wrong. This is the construction company that we hired a couple of years ago to do different projects associated with our relocating our water lines. Did they relocate any sewer lines? Okay, but the last part of this connected to the overpass was relocating a water line. They just completed that, so I need to, what was the total cumulative total now that we're up to? That we're, we would write, write the check for?
It would be a hundred, right at a hundred thirty-four thousand.
Okay.
That is four, a hundred and forty-three thousand. I think it was a hundred and thirty-three, uh, plus.
So if we asked up to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, that, that invoice will be carried? Okay, so we need a motion to carry, to approve up to a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to pay, and this would be paid in full then? We don't have anything else that we have to have relocated due to the overpass? Unless R-DOT comes in, yes?
So that's actually resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh four?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to accept the resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh four.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Kyle, second? Now, do we have?
It's, excuse me, it's numbered at six. Is it?
I changed it.
Okay.
Yes, you, you got it, I think, I did it, I did a correction of that.
There's an update in the agenda and.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Gotcha, okay.
But it is four.
Okay, four it is.
It is four.
It is four, yes.
So it is two thousand twenty-three dash four, correct? Okay. Do we need to have a roll call on that amount of money? Okay, let's do.
Jennifer Massey?
Was that in the budget already? Is that something that was already budgeted?
They were, well, initially there was a budget amount, but then R-DOT said they wanted to widen through sixty-five on the north side of the bridge. But that, with that money, it wasn't in the budget at that point in time.
But the last time we.
And we had already finished completing all of our relocating of our utilities, and then they tried to widen it, so with us being in their utility right, being in their state right of way, they required us wanting to move it, so.
At that point, we didn't have a choice, right?
Didn't have a choice.
But we talked about, meeting before last, we talked about this, didn't we?
Yes.
Yes, we talked about it back in March.
Yes.
Yeah.
But at that time, they had not finished. There was only one invoice, but we knew that there was going to be a second invoice with a cumulative total around a hundred and thirty-some-a-thousand. So since then, they completed what, the end of last week or the first of this week?
They amended yesterday.
So now they just need to be paid?
Yes, and then we, they will be paid in full, and we will not have them to do anything else regarding of the bridge?
Right, right.
Okay.
Not unless R-DOT comes up with another change.
Yes, we hope not.
That won't happen, and we're not involved in it.
And again, we're not going to be reimbursed for this hundred and thirty-four thousand, right?
We'll get reimbursed, thirty-three thousand plus of that money.
But we, we're obligated to pay and then get whatever percentage they're gonna reimburse us back. Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's a good question. Okay?
Mark Kiehlman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jack Paul?
Yes.
Kyle Mark?
Yes. Thank you. Carries unanimously? Okay, next on the agenda, number B. Brian Williams has resigned. I need a motion to accept his resignation for, and, and indicate that we now have a vacancy on the council.
I'll make the motion to accept Alderman Williams' resignation.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Either one, I was in mere, Jake, either one.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The vacancy has been approved. Now we move into the appointment of an alderman. What I would like to do is nominate Zach Warren. We have had in-depth conversation as well as, I've communicated to all of the councilmen with his resume, and we've all agreed that this is the way we, we needed to follow up. So do I have, hear a motion to accept the appointment of Zach Warren?
I make a motion to exact, accept Zach Warren as councilman replacement for Brian Williams.
And let me add that that would be only to fulfill his.
The rest of his term.
And I think that's roughly a year and a half, right? Yeah.
A second.
Thank you. Do we need to have a roll vote or just?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I bring up a point of discussion on that? Because we've talked about this.
Yes.
And I didn't know if this needed to be brought up on the front end. But as far as Mr. Warren being a member of our volunteer fire department, for which we're grateful and we don't want him to give up that position, does it need to be stated something about a recusal from votes that had to do with fire department funding?
We have talked about that, and that's what we agreed to. If something comes up where there is going to be a vote in terms of involving the, the funding or whatever of the fire department, we felt like that would be proper.
He would just abstain?
Yes.
From the vote?
Is Mr. Warren here?
Yes.
You wanna step up, introduce yourself, man?
Remember what I said? Before the meeting.
We had a long series of questions we'd like to ask you. I'm just kidding.
I'm ready for it.
No.
I'm ready for it.
I said that you and Mark could not sit beside each other because you, you go to the same barber.
Just go with the sash. That'll be the, that'll be the, the tale to tell there.
There you go.
So, I mean, my name is Zachary Warren. I'm a resident of thirty-five North Dogwood here in Mayflower. Really relish the chance of being able to serve my community in any way I can, whether it be the fire department or here on the city council. Well, thank you.
Anyone has, have any questions of Zach?
I don't.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
For appointment of Zach?
You've had.
Oh, you've already made the motion? All right, do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, we need to take a roll vote, please.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Kiehlman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jack Paul?
Yes.
Kyle Mark?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Yes. Do you want to, as the attorney? Barber.
You told me you wanted me to.
I did, I did.
But Dustin.
Either of you, I cannot, either of you.
I've got you, I've got you to sign that form.
Okay, so you want me to?
Please.
So how do we need to do this?
Have them come up? I need to go out front? Get the camera ready, yes.
This isn't considered hazing, by the way.
Gotta swear at you.
I don't think we've ever had two Zachs on the city council before.
And one that looks like Mark.
This is going to be confusing.
I'm just gonna call him Harry, that's all I'm gonna.
Okay, do I need to read the first part of this? Or do I just go into swearing?
Just this, just this swearing thing, raise your right hand.
Now, you're supposed to, he's supposed to raise his right hand and repeat after me. I, Zach Warren.
I, Zach Warren.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office of alderman.
The duties of office of alderman.
Of which I am about to enter.
Of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
And I can't.
Where, will we have this?
Well, probably, I assume we're gonna kind of rotate for the, didn't we do, didn't we vote Deuce and Jordy?
So Zachs would switch places?
No, we'd all kind of screwed out, I guess.
Oh, y'all want me to move now?
Come on. Might as well.
Zach, I'm good.
I'm good to miss you.
Well, everybody tracks their.
When they separated, you look.
Well, I guess along with, along with serving. Okay.
So you're doing it right. Zach?
Yeah.
Could you step forward, please, and sign this, and then it would be totally. Unless you want to be more. You wanna sit here now? That's what you do.
Thank you.
One time I had my arm sitting there.
No, no. All right, thank you, and welcome, Zach.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate your willingness to serve our great community. Okay, moving to our next. We need to, as you, we have talked about, our residential garbage collection contract is going to be up. I believe it's the end of August. And so we need to have a motion that we can put out our solicit bids for that residential garbage collection. And right now, as we talked about in our council workshop, we will, before we finalize that bid, we will agree in terms of whoever bids, when that package is, is finalized, you will go through and identify exactly what it will cost us. We're gonna go through and say, okay, for our monthly or, or weekly two-day pickup of trash, what it's gonna cost. Then we're going to itemize each duty that we feel is, is, is what we're wanting, and we want to see the comparison of that pricing. And then, once those bids come back in, we can take that and actually assign, yes, that this is what we want, and, and à la carte, basically. So that we, we've had a lot of discussions on, maybe there are some things that we don't really need, but yet, there are some trade-offs. So we want to make sure that we know what that would cost if we were to select that. So that's kind of the way that we were, we're, we're, we're moving forward that. So the motion tonight is to allow us to put, one, put out a bid for our collection, and, but two, is to finalize that document, and as we do that, then we're approving that it can be solicited. So do I hear them?
Probably more like a request for proposals.
Yes, that's basically what it is.
Companies come in.
And submit whatever, yes.
You'll have, say, one company might be willing to do it with, without required cans, and the next company over here says, I'll do it for this price, but you must have our cans.
Yes.
So you'll have different flavors of companies. So it's, I think a request for proposals is, you know, and they'll, they'll know, they'll know what, what's up.
But the idea is to make sure that whoever bids on our, our collection process is that we're comparing, we will be able to compare apples to apples. One would not be judged against something that the other one doesn't provide, or that type of thing. So that we can really clear, clearly understand what we're getting, and we can, we can finalize those, those quotes. So I need a, do I hear a?
I'll make a motion to, for the city to be able to accept bids or proposals for trash service.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Zach seconds? Do I hear all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Ayes carry, so thank you. We'll get that, we'll get that packet finalized, where we can get that out as soon as possible, that that won't be delayed, okay? All right, now we move to the, the planning commission appointment. We currently have a number of, of planning commission members that have been on the planning commission for a long time. And we really appreciate their, their work and their dedication, but we feel like that it's time to kind of move some of these, allow these people to, to leave the planning commission, retain some of them, but we were wanting to add two more to that planning commission. So right now, do I hear, let me, let me go back and clarify. Chad Patterson has been on the planning commission, and he's agreed to stay. Then we've got James Oliver, he's been there seventeen years. He's seen, has seen a lot. And so he said he would be glad if we needed him to, to, to rotate off of the planning commission. Then Sammy Reynolds has been on there seven years also. So who's going to remain is Cliff. So who's going to remain is Cliff Weacon, he's been there approximately two years. Stephen Smedley, approximately two years. Um, and then we, what I'm needing is the two new, uh, planning commission, uh, planning committee, uh, commissioners would be Randy Holman and Rusty Waters. Ru- Randy Holman is the, he and his wife owned, uh, several of the subway restaurants. Uh, and he's graciously said that he would, he would fulfill a term on the planning commission. He, he, we're, we're bringing in a business background that we feel that that's going to be really important to us all, to strengthen that. Then we've got also, um, Rusty Waters. He's got real estate background as well as business, and he also has agreed to a two-year term. So we're welcoming both of those, or those are, are who you need to vote on, whether or not we're going to accept them or not. So do I have a motion to accept these two new planning commissioners and rotate off the others that I had mentioned?
I make a motion to, uh, accept the new planning commission members and rotate the others, some of the others off.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Do we need to have a roll call, a roll vote because of the individuals that are coming on?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, roll call.
Well, the motion was made to do both of them, so I mean, you, so you're approving that motion, you could, could have spread, split them apart, but but I don't think there's a wrong way to do any of this. Roll call is fine for this situation.
Jennifer Massey? Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Zach Paul?
Yes.
Cal Mark?
Yes.
Zach Warren?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. The motion carries, and we do appreciate that. Then we move, uh, again, um, for the chairman of the planning commission. Uh, I would like to nominate James Snyder. But before we vote on that, uh, we have a, a policy that are an ordinance, and maybe just a law as well. Um, anytime there is an officer that we're putting in place, like the chairman of the planning commission, if that, if an individual works for the city already, we have to get an approval that the council is okay with that. James Snyder is the one, James right here, uh, has been, uh, I hired James as a contractor to build our new city website. He's been working for several months on it. So I want to divulge that I'd like to nominate James as our planning commission, um, chairman. But in the same breath, I want to acknowledge or, um, announce that he is also, we're paying him to do this service. And I don't know if that has to be, does that have to be separated, to be approved?
If he's, if he's just a, uh, W-two employee, then no, just, just discussing it, I think, is the, is the appropriate.
Okay, so that we can approve?
Just, just so you're, yeah, just so we're clear, we're not, we're not paying him for the commission spot, we're paying him for the, um, web development?
Both.
Oh, both, okay.
The planning commission gets, uh, what is it, twenty-five dollars? Twenty-five dollars a month. Uh, yes, we get rich, they, they get rich. And, and.
Don't spend it all in one place.
Uh, twenty-five dollars a, uh, a, a meeting if they attend. If they don't attend, for whatever reason, they get zero. Okay, so, he does get paid not only from the planning commission aspect of twenty-five dollars per meeting, but he also is getting paid as a contractor doing our website.
That's right, so, so really, yeah. Um, in that situation, so, is that, is that the, is that item F? Is that item F for the contractor for the website?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so when we cross that bridge, we would ju- we would just need to, to preserve it in the record that it is a, a city official is gonna be accepting that contract.
Okay.
That, that's, that's.
That's why we broke it down from F and G. I, I didn't want to have any problems going forward. Uh, I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge what his duties are, and that he, he will be getting paid in both areas.
So if he's the chairman of the planning commission, he, he is an, an official.
Yes.
And then the, the ethical rule is, can you have an official also being a contractor for the city? And yes, you can, as long as it's, it's, it's well preserved on the record.
And that's what we're bringing to the council right now, that you have to make a motion if you deem.
Well, let's do G first.
G first?
And, and approve him as, as the official first.
Okay.
Then we'll do, then we can go out of order.
Alright, then let's, let's go with the, um, item G, planning commission chairman. I would like to nominate James Snyder as that chairman. Do we have a motion to accept?
Is he on there now?
No. These three people.
Can he be chairman? Not already being on there?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I thought it said that you couldn't, so I thought maybe we'd have to waiver that, too.
No, you can.
He's reading it in his mind.
I, 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 I don't know, I, I don't know.
Well, I think even if it says it, the council can override that, though, I would think, and I don't wanna skip it, if it does say that.
I was told that, that the, the mayor could appoint the chairman, and that the chairman did not have to, uh, in other words, by default, the chairman did not have to, to serve on the planning commission as a member for X number of days, years, months, that type of thing.
I think that's how Mayflower is set up, it is, it is unique.
I'll make a motion to, uh, confirm James Snyder's planning commission chairman. If anything comes up that we need to clarify or make another.
Exactly.
Motion, we can do that, and waiver if we need to.
Okay.
But, uh, that's my motion.
Okay. Dustin, would you verify and make sure that we didn't? Yes, okay.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, it was kinda messed up, I remember. It needs to be rewritten anyway, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, you would think that it would be written like that, that you need to serve on the committee.
Yeah, or you can be the chairman.
Right.
But we're not in a position to be picky right now.
You're right about that.
I'll go ahead in a second.
Okay, thank you. Now with that, do we need a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I wanna get your motion exactly, Mark, say that again.
I make a motion to, uh, accept the mayor's proposal for James Snyder for the planning commission chairman. And if there is a, something in the rule or something we need to clarify, that we do that at a later time.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We've already had a second, yes. And now, roll call, please.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Kikeman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Zach Paul?
Yes.
Cal Mark?
Yes.
Zach Warren?
Yes.
Alright, now that takes care of, as you said.
Yes.
Now, the, the appointment now is confirmed.
He is appointed as the chairman of the planning commission, and so now, the requ- the, the issue is.
Contractor for the city?
Whether he would be also a contractor for the website.
Now, do we have to vote, uh, through a motion that we accept that, and that that's okay? How should that be worded?
It, it may need to be done as an ordinance, um, at the next meeting, but we can just, you know, let's load on it for the night at least.
Okay. For his approval?
Yes.
To, to then later write an ordinance?
Yep.
To accept that?
Let's, let's just at least get a verbal approval for the noun, then if we need an ordinance, then we do that.
Do we need a motion to?
Yes.
To start that? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept James Snyder for the website.
That the planning commission chairman is also contractor for the city's website.
Yes, correct. Alright, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do we need another roll call vote?
Yes.
Dude, I, I've got a question discussion of this, is this considered financial, Dustin, since it is a contract? I mean, yeah, 'cause I'm guessing the amount's under the threshold.
Definitely.
Since we haven't, we didn't have to approve the, was it five thousand?
It's five thousand without your approval.
Right, that's why, so I'm guessing it's under that threshold.
Oh, yes, yeah, as far as his, his monthly rate and that type of, oh, yes, yes.
So.
I just wanted to clarify that.
So it, it could be argued he didn't even need to, but, but because he's also on the, on the planning commission, I, I.
I wanted to make sure that all of that is, is divulged, and that everyone knows that.
I think that's all we really needed to do, was make sure, do an ordinance that he can do it, even though he's on planning commission.
That, that's what I'll double check, is whether or not an ordinance would just be good to have, and we may, I may come back to you in the next month with an ordinance to, to shore it up, yes.
I think that's what we did.
We just wanna make sure that e- everyone on the council, and it goes down on the record, that he's going to be doing both, and he would be being, he would, uh, be paid in both. Okay? So you, we've already gone through the roll call, I mean, with the roll vote?
No, we've got a motion to.
Okay, so let's go through, uh, the roll, um, just to make sure.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Kikeman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Zach Paul?
Yes.
Cal Mark?
Yes.
Zach Warren?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, if we discover that we need to do something else, then we will take that up at the next council meeting.
Yes, and, and just, just while we're on, on still that, on that topic, the chairman of the planning commission is, I, I, I don't see any requirement that they be an existing member.
That's what, that was my understanding.
Yes, serves at the pleasure of the mayor, that's what your ordinance is.
But I do think, in the, in the future, we need to revisit that, so that.
We're looking at restructure in that committee anyway.
Yes, yes. But, but, but that's on down the road, okay?
That issue is resolved.
Yes, okay, thank you. Welcome, James. Okay, number H. We, we have two pieces of equipment that we need to sell. Um, in the street department, we've got, uh, street and parks department, we have a ni- a two thousand twelve Kubota diesel mower. That, Jimmy, is that a, um, zero-turn mower? Zero-turn, and it is a diesel engine, and we've got all the specifications on that. Uh, then the next is a ditch witch trencher that belonged to the water department, correct? And it hasn't ran a run in what? Yeah, the bottom line is, that would only be sold for scrap iron. It, unless somebody bought it and wanted to re- refurbish it. So, what we're trying to do is, look at our equipment, and the, the items that are just sitting around, we need to get rid of those, and so that we can use those monies to put down on a new piece of equipment, if we, we desire to, to go that route. So I need, uh, if you will, a motion to allow me to sell these two, um, and get the proceeds, and then it will be turned back into crystal to wherever, whatever department, I mean, wha- whatever fund that would funnel back into. Do I hear a motion?
Do we have a motion before discussion?
Yes, yeah, motion and second.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Thank you, passes. Now, let's move to, it wa- this wasn't on the agenda, but it's really important. I don't know if those of you, um, have ever heard of a baby box.
Mayor, can I back you up for just a second on the mode? How is that sold, is it gonna be sold at auction, is it?
We're, we, I'm going to get in touch with a gentleman that go- has an on, online auction. Um, Dustin is the one that told me about it, they use Greenbrier, they use the same, same individual.
Do we have to open it for bids for whomever, is that the way? I just wanted to make sure we weren't like, had somebody in mind and dumped it, that's what my question was about.
No, no.
I made the motion.
This is, this way, everybody gets a fair.
Yes, okay.
You, you know, we're not gonna turn around and say, okay, I got a brother-in-law that'll give us three dollars, no. It, it's, we're gonna go through an auction-type situation, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Dustin, uh, I called this guy, and remember, the, the, there are several trucks out here that you guys have already approved for me to sell. So now, we've got a cumulative, uh, amount of vehicles and equipment, I can turn over to that auctioneer, or auction company, or whatever it's called, and, uh, they will do the auction online. I think they, they come out, take pictures of the items, uh, check and see if it will run, and this type of thing. Put the particulars online, and then that way, anyone that wants to bid, even if, if it's anybody on the council, you, it's fair, and it's the legal way to, to handle that.
You can do that in any order you want, so in this situation, y'all can approve to sell it at an auction, that's perfectly fine. Sometimes it's the other way, sometimes the buyer finds us.
Yes.
And then, and we come to y'all with, uh, a request, can we sell this item to a certain person for this price, and we do it that way, too. You, you still get the same oversight, and this, in this particular situation, it's public auction.
Right, it, we would go, I would rather, let's go public auction, where more people can see it, and typically, that's the way you can get more money for it. So we, we need to, those items to benefit us. I don't know that, I don't know that.
Usually ten percent or something.
But they handle everything.
True Grit, this website.
Oh, is that right?
True Grit Auction Service.
Okay. But I'll be checking in on that, and, and whatever I find out, I'll put every, put that in email to all of the council, to make sure that everyone, uh, is up to date on that. I'm sorry, any, any more discussion on, on that? Thank you. Chief, uh, if you would, come forward, please, and explain for those of us that, uh, might not know what the baby box is, and, and the importance of that.
First, I apologize for not getting this on the agenda sooner, I didn't have everything put together, and I know Mark is worried about the paper over here, but we're, we're good. So, um, you've probably all seen something at one point or another about baby boxes in the news media here recently, because they're being installed in a lot of different locations, uh, around the country. Uh, Arkansas has a few of them that's installed already, Conway has one. And the police department, uh, almost in a conjoined effort with the fire department, would like to install one of these baby boxes here at the police department for use. Um, our goal is to purchase this baby box with donated funds. We don't intend to use any city funds to purchase the box or have it installed. The baby box, in short, is installed on an outside wall, and is accessed, uh, by a newborn's parent to surrender the baby without questions or cause. There's a state law in place that covers them for doing that, um, and it has to be at a facility that's manned. So we do meet the criteria for Arkansas to do that. The overall cost varies, a lot of that is due to installation, and we won't know until we get a firm commitment from a contractor on what the final cost is going to be. But again, after, if this is approved through y'all's motion tonight, we will move forward with a contract with the company, uh, or, uh, the Safe Haven Company to install the baby box, and we would present that contract to them, and this would be an ongoing event. The only thing the city will ever be out, um, would be the actual yearly fees. They have a five-year term, what, what they're classifying as a term, and there's a five hundred dollar per term, uh, fee. So it's basically a hundred dollars a year, and then, uh, a three hundred dollar per year recertification through their company to make sure the box is up to standards. The alarm systems are in place on the box, and it's being monitored properly and maintained. So what I'm asking here tonight, with the packet that I provided to y'all, is your permission to enter into this agreement with Safe Haven Baby Boxes to have it installed. Questions?
So that would be basically four hundred dollars a year?
Yes, on the, on the city's part, that's what we would end up providing for that.
And have we identified any donors for?
We have already had some folks reach out to us that had, uh, understood that we were considering this. We've had several people reach out. I have not accepted any donations, I don't wanna do that until we get into this agreement with the company. All the donations, uh, ideally will be made. All the donations, uh, ideally will be made directly to them. If any donations are made to us, we will forward that donation to them, so it all goes in to this account to pay for this device.
Chief, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What's the total cost of that?
Well, again, that's what I said, uh, in this agreement back there, it, the baby box, I think, is seven thousand, and then there's as much, I'm sorry, that's incorrect. Let me get back here to the fees.
It was roughly forty thousand, wasn't it?
Uh, initial fee is eleven thousand. Uh, uh, other fees are estimated between five and seven, depending on construction needs. So, so you're looking at, uh, eighteen thousand tops, uh, presumably for this.
Oh, well, I, I, I was way off then. I don't know where I heard forty thousand.
Some of them I have understood cost as much as thirty thousand, but that's not the numbers that we were given on this.
Okay.
I don't anticipate any drastic changes on that. Um, it will be monitored by the company as, as well as the department.
Chief, would you s- speak to that in terms of what you had told me, um, that if someone opens the door, places the baby on it, then when it, the door's closed, it's locked, an alarm goes off and that.
The box actually has three alarms. It has a door open alarm, a baby inserted alarm, and then a closed alarm. Um, it has to be responded to in a timely manner that's, uh, regulated by the company how long it has to be. It goes directly to, uh, them as well as our dispatch to make sure that someone's here in a timely manner and can take charge of the baby and get medical treatment started as soon as possible.
There's also a delay in the process before the notification, right, to allow for anonymity of the parent that's?
There, there is, uh.
Couple minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, i- it's a very brief time, but w- we're looking for the safety of the baby. We're not looking to try to prosecute anybody for child abandonment or any issues like that. That's not the goal.
I have a quick question. Um, I may have misunderstood you there. You said we qualify because we're manned twenty-four seven?
It has to have access twenty-four seven.
It has to have access, something, 'cause I was wondering.
We, we have somebody on duty twenty-four hours a day.
Right.
There's not necessarily somebody in the building, but they can meet the criteria on the timeline, yes.
How quick do they have to get there?
I'm sorry.
How quick do they have to get there?
Kelly, three minutes?
Yeah, five minutes, um, if you need to just ask, make it on, keep it on, or the fire department, and then pull it apart.
Okay.
You'll have to wait.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, so if police par- if all the police officers were down somewhere.
Sure.
You know, they're not.
We, we've got enough people between the two departments and, and volunteers that we're going to absolutely meet that criteria for the Arkansas law.
What about the paramedics? Would they be allowed to respond?
They're, they're all made out of them.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're part of the response.
Okay.
And I guess my only other question would be if, um, if we do enter into the contract and we don't get all the donations that we need to cover it, where would the money come from?
We will still maintain this contract until the money is raised.
Okay, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't actually start, start anything until?
It's not going to just fall out. Yeah, no.
Okay.
One of the things that we talked about, um, you had to go through a perm- permit process, right? Has that?
Yes, sir.
Has that been fulfilled?
We can't fulfill that till I get this motion approved by y'all.
Okay, but once it is approved, we've already had several people that have wanted, and politicians that want to, to contribute. And the chief was saying until we, we get this approved, it's really not legal to accept this money. But if it's approved, what is the next step in terms of, like, say, if any of us want to, to write a check or a politician or, or anyone?
We, we will gather the information. Uh, I have a contract that, uh, Dustin has had. Once y'all approve, I'll sign the contract and get it back to them. Then they will forward us the information about how donations can be made directly to, uh, Safe Haven.
The company itself?
The company itself.
Okay.
To go into account for this device.
And that would be ear- needed to be earmarked, Mayflower.
It would be, yes, yes, sir.
Where's the nearest baby box from here?
Conway, one of their fire stations.
It's a downtown fire station. Doesn't Malmel Fire Department have one as well?
I know they were looking at it.
I think they just put one in.
Okay, they might have just recently.
Yeah.
Station one?
They've had, they've had one, I would say.
I'm here about the blue, blue baby, like, in the, in, aren't they actually, uh, helping generate to, or control environment in there? As far as, uh, oxygen, it's to why?
Well, it, it's temperature controlled with the building. There's no environmental, there's no environmental containment unit for the device. It, I mean, it is sealed from the elements. It doesn't allow debris or anything like that in there. But the baby ideally is not going to be in there but just a couple of minutes before somebody takes charge.
So, there, there's a heater that's built in the unit, that would be the big thing for them.
Okay.
Chief, if, if.
I'm still learning things about it myself.
It's, it's a proprietary, it's, it's a product that this company makes, and you can, I mean, and when, when we get ready to install it, they will come and, and have a big to-do.
They, they are responsible for the installation, and they do their checks on it every year. There's an annual recertification that has to be completed, so.
We'll all be out there having to look at it and stuff.
Yes, sir.
To Mr. Mark's question, that's what chief and I talked about at length, is, is we're not really committed with this company until we have the money on the table. And they, they won't even schedule installation until, until basically we're ready, payment falls.
Okay.
So if it takes us, if it takes us sixty days or six months or however long it takes.
Of course, if it's a year down the road, then we could, as a council, vote to fund the rest of it, as well.
Could, right.
We have been talking about this, and that's why the chief was saying until we get approval, uh, we can't even advertise that this is coming up.
Then I'll make a motion to designate and authorize the mayor and/or the May, Mayflower Police Department to execute the purchase of the Safe Haven baby box.
It's a lease. It's not a complete purchase.
Sign the contract, or start moving towards the contract.
Or move us towards the.
Instead of the purchase, lease.
Start lease purchase, lease. Agreement.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you.
Will you also send, Zach, speaking at you, I'll go, would you send this as, as well in an email to us so we can, I keep it?
I, I will send you this as well as a copy of the contract.
Okay.
Good. What, what happens after tonight? Well, let's go ahead and get a, a roll vote.
I'll second the motion.
Zach is already.
Okay, I'll third then.
A third?
Thank you for your support.
Yes.
Let, let me get this motion straight. How exactly does it need to be going in?
The, the motion to sign the contract for the lease purchase agreement with Safe Haven baby box.
Do we need to, uh, any other explanation on that? Do you have the correct wording? Okay, all right. Do we need to have a roll call vote, or can we just? Okay, um, then all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Good. So the motion carries, and so now, chief, will we be getting additional information in terms of?
I will provide the council additional information when it becomes available to me. Uh, Dustin has a copy of the contract. Uh, I sent him the exhibit A and B that y'all also have, and that lays out a few more of the terms and agreements. And I will return the contract to them, and as they provide me information, I will get it to y'all.
Good. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, the next item, the last item, Raymond, would you mind talking to us about, uh, as everyone knows, we've had some problems with our bathroom. Uh, flooding, uh, backing up, and so we entered into a, a contract with Tony Woodham. Uh, he's, uh, the owner of Faulkner Plumbing, I believe. Would you mind walking us through and giving us an update?
Uh, we got started on it. I don't remember no dates or timelines or anything like that. Um, of course, it was installed right here at the back corner of the police department, just outside of that wooden fenced area.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Um, anyway, everything went well there. Um, there for the inspection, uh, we had a little problem with the electrical side of it. Uh, this building is being three-phase, it only has two O eight voltage here, so we had to put a booster, uh, on that, for that station to, for two forty. So, uh, that went well, but it was a little bit of a, a delay there, but, um, didn't have any problems, uh, plenty of storage in the tank for any, um, over, any flow for that particular night. Saying, got it up and running the next day, done the startup, and everything seems to be working really well at this point in time. Um, the other day when they had court here, I come over after court was over with to see if there was any complications, any backup or any thing like that, and didn't see any indications there. So hopefully, this has, uh, resolved our issue here with this building, of putting in that system.
Quick question, Raymond. I know we originally approved that bid.
Of a hundred and thirty something?
As a, like a three-phase bid?
Yes.
That if this didn't fix it, because it was kind of a trial and error problem, that it moved to this, and I know Mr. Woodham even stood there and said, it may not even hit that first mark. Do we have an invoice on that to know what?
Yeah, that invoice is already been turned in.
And paid.
To my understanding on that.
I mean, the amount though.
Not part of the invoice.
I'm just curious as far as.
It was the amount of that first option, yes.
First, first, first part of that. I think it was like forty.
Oh, it was two thousand less? Okay. Good.
Everything seems to be doing good. Hopefully, it stays that way.
So we got better than best case scenario?
Well, and, and, and again, uh, it could have been a lot worse, and so.
I'm not trying to change it. I'm just.
No, no, no. Um, and Raymond has, has done a good job of keeping an eye out and constantly being out there inspecting them, and we appreciate that, Raymond. Um, so that we make sure that it was, it was doing right. We didn't have to worry about that with, with, uh, Tony. Uh, they do a first, first-rate job, and we were, we were lucky to get them. Uh, so, good thing we didn't have to spend the whole hundred and something thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. We hope that this is going to be it.
Hopefully.
Yes.
I think the, the court date was probably the most people we've had in here.
A lot, yes.
Probably the biggest.
There was quite a few people here that day before.
Lot, lot of toilet flushing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Raymond. All right, uh, our next regular council, city council meeting is, uh, Tuesday, July the twenty-fifth, seven P M. Um, our next council workshop meeting is on Thursday, July the thirteenth at six A M. Here.
How about P?
I'm sorry? Oh, did I say A M? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Six P M, that's correct, and then. That's right. We wouldn't have a lot of participation, would we? And then the next planning commission meeting is, uh, seven P M., Tuesday, July the eleventh. And I did say P M. on that one, didn't I? Seven P M.? Okay. Uh, again, I would like to remind everybody, this Thursday night, uh, the game and fish commission is going to make a presentation, um, out, and it will be held out at the high school, um, not auditorium, high school cafe, or cafeteria. And, and this, this is the game and fish, or presentation, six o'clock, six o'clock, uh, six P M.
If it's anything like the one in Conway, it was, uh, at six o'clock, they started, um, like the little finger food thing, and then the meeting that started about six thirty, six forty-five.
Yeah. Well, it'd be finger food, but at least it will be food. But, but the, the point is, uh, tell your friends, um, this is going to be, uh, a, a, a presentation on the future plans that they have for Lake Conway. Lot of information. Uh, did everybody get one of the fact sheets, uh, that we passed around? Everybody get one? Okay, if you didn't, just let us know. We've got a few more. And, uh, then the second thing, I want to make sure that everybody, uh, knows about, and I hope that you'll come out and participate. This Saturday, July the first, we're going to have our Mayflower Independence Day Festival. It will start at three P M., three P M., uh, that Saturday afternoon. We're going to have dunking booth, uh, they, we'll have food. We'll have, um, entertainment or music. Uh, what am I missing? Oh, uh, the, uh, beanbag, uh, competition? Yeah, yes, and, uh, yeah, the carb mash or bash or whatever we want to call it. There'll also be a small train, uh, going around for the, the younger kids, a bounce house, a water, uh, sprinkler game type, type situation. So there's going to be quite a bit there. Um, tell your friends, bring your family, come out, and let's have a good time. Oh, and then like around nine, nine thirty at night, that's when the fireworks will be released, shot or whatever. No, nothing is at the high school. Everything is here at the city park. Yes, sir. Any questions? If that's the case, then we'll adjourn this council meeting. Thank you for coming.